Did you make the stop or did you just fill it up here?
No, I let you out.
Oh, that was you?
I let you out!
You were slow.
I talked to everybody!
Goodness, that's a jumbo size, huh?
They brought them specially for me. They're even hidden in a special spot so I don't know where they're at.
Isn't it nice to be able to go behind the counter?
Nice to have 24 ounces instead of only the 20 that I had been living on?
Do you actually keep that warm long enough to get it down?
I think that's why I was talking to him, I guess.
The microwave should go to ten. When we go camping in Bowery Waters, my wife makes a huge pot of coffee as we're closing down a tent. So we fill our water bottles up with coffee and we're drinking cold coffee by 10:00 in the morning all day today.
That just does not sound good to me.
Cause you're still thinking too?
Mine finally decided to...
There we go. Okay, I finally got the agenda. Five one. Cinco de uno. Oh wait, uno de mile.
Hey, look at that work. Unbelievable is all I can say.
Betty, are you ready? My computer is just not being cooperative today.
Who was messing with our desk?
They had coordinator yesterday.
With who?
I don't remember. You sound like our kids now. How did that get broken? I don't know! Standing there with a rock and a bat in their hand.
Alright, recall the commissioned order.
We have any minutes to report, Betty? Announcements of upcoming meetings and events and commissioner committee liaison reports.
Coal extension tonight. Got a coal county zoning meeting tonight. Eastside Business Association tomorrow morning. Russellville tonight, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, there's Larry back there.
Uh, let's see what else we got here. Capital Regions Downtown Clinic has an open house tonight. I would encourage everyone here to, if you get the opportunity to swing by in 10, they're gonna actually have a health clinic downtown for the first time ever. In my lifetime at least. Used to be some doctors offices when I was a kid, but they were all... The Lincoln Farmers Market will for the first time ever be downtown Saturday morning. So, please come downtown and frequent that, that'll be a great event for our community and... The Lincoln's Farmers Market, I believe it starts... Cap Region is at 5 o'clock tonight. Um, it's on Madison Street about, I don't know, three doors north of, um, of... No, it'd be south of Madison's Cafe. North of Central Bank, south of... Between, between Central Bank and Madison's Cafe, about that. What else we got here? Is that it?
We got a zoning meeting on Tuesday as well.
That's in Taos, right?
Wardsville Lions Club.
Wardsville, that's right. And, just as an update to everyone, the senate, um, in senate, in House Bill 2013 has put $6 million in for St. Mary's and Lincoln University. So, we're cautiously optimistic that that will survive the legislative process, but a lot of folks been working on that, so... Okay, first item on the agenda is appointment of Calvin Broughton to the Coal County Planning Commission. I entertain a motion to approve him.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second to appoint Calvin Broughton to the Planning Commission, call roll please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, by a roll call vote, that's approved, there you go.
For the next one, for the Mid-Missouri Solid Waste Movement.
Next item on the agenda is appointment of Jeff Helsher and Mark Lubering to the Mid-Missouri Solid Waste Management District Council. Entertain a motion to, so, appoint.
So moved.
I'll second it, any discussion? Uh, call the roll please.
Yes.
Yes. Don't want to appoint yourself?
Not really, this one's up for grabs, Sam Bushman may get that when he gets in. We can do that about December 30th.
Uh, bid award 2014-14 Glass Beads. That we have?
No, thank you.
Any discussion? Hear none and entertain a motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, bid's awarded, next. Paint materials, yeah, I have to open them up, it takes me a second here.
Um, the recommendation is to Sherwin-Williams contingent on successful MoDOT testing. They are the low bidder.
That's what we've done before too, contingent on testing. Alright, any discussion? Hear none and entertain a motion to award the bid to Sherwin-Williams contingent upon successful MoDOT testing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, bid's awarded, next is 2014-16 for Pipes.
The recommendation is to award the lowest and best in each category with available material.
Alright, any discussion on that point? If not, I entertain a motion to accept staff recommendation of lowest and best with available material.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, next is 2014-17 Sign Materials. Can you make these any bigger? Golly, they're tiny! I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Alright, any discussion? If not, I entertain a motion to, uh, award the lowest bidder with available materials.
So moved.
I'll second. Um, are these, do these include, uh, shipping and stuff? Or, I see a lot of these are from Ohio.
Yeah, they should all be destination through the way that they document it.
Who's the recommendation?
Lowest with available... Lowest with the available product.
Is that how we bid that too? To piecemeal it?
We didn't, yeah, we can award either way, that's historically how we've done it and no one's objected to it.
Is that how you guys do that, Larry? I mean, do you buy one sign or one bracket from one supplier and... So you're ordering from several different suppliers?
Okay. Any discussion? Alright, a motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, bid's awarded. Next is 2014-18 Asphalt Materials. Now we're getting to the big stuff.
Um, the recommendation is to the lowest bidder in each category with availability.
So my question on this one is, Higgins is only gonna hold their price for a month. What happens then? Okay, so what ha, I mean, that's why I want to inquire, what happens if, um, in June, we're out in the middle of paving a road and we need the cold mix or we need the whatever, and we call up Higgins and they say, "Yeah, it's $120 a ton." And we say, "Well, we had bid for 74, we were all okay with 74, what happens then?" Alright, stop the project and go there?
We won't have any cold mix through the summer.
That's true, it's UP.
We won't have any cold mix through the summer, will we? We'll be using all hot mix.
Yeah, it'll all be hot mix, that's right.
Well, 90% of what you're gonna pick up come from Jefferson anyway. I mean, you're not gonna... I mean, cause going all the way to Tipton. They have a, does Higgins have a plant in Loose Creek too, or?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not, it's not just Tipton, it's... Do they even have a plant in Tipton?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
Alright, I'm fine with it. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to award the lowest available bidder with available property or variable materials. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 2014, is this 23? Yeah, 23, Cold Milling and Asphalt Paving.
We got one bid for this, Jefferson Asphalt, and they are the recommendation.
Any discussion?
Um, did we have anybody else interested?
The last few years, we've never had anyone but Jefferson Asphalt over this.
This is just for a spot where we're doing repairs. Uh, if we've got a large enough area that where we came to with our box for us, we use their paper. It just gives us, uh, some options. The same way with Miller. You know, if we have a large area that, that's gone bad, we can get the Miller in there just for a few hours. It's hard for companies, these Millers are so large, uh, heavy. Um, I don't, the only one, other one I know will clean back out and...
So this is for a small four-foot head asphalt milling?
Right.
And that's just an hourly price and that gets them there and...
Right.
They charge travel time both ways. Good enough.
Okay. And I entertain a motion to award.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to award bid to Jefferson Asphalt, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the one I can't open, which has to do with janitorial supplies.
Well, basically, we just went up in there, it's just an email and you guys all received that email.
Okay.
So it's the same email. Well, you know the questions about the, the dispensers? And I think we've got that solved now, so as far as...
What did we do the last time whenever...
We're talking about...
I thought we were doing the same thing, that if somebody else gets it and it requires a different dispenser, they're gonna have to take them down and replace it.
Well, we, the direction we were given the last time was to use the existing and to bid it that way. In the meanwhile of doing that, we figured out that we may not own all the existing. So, that...
Alright.
That is what we needed to figure out if we owned it though.
As I understand, the solution really is, is go out to bid and then at the time of award, this becomes a relevant discussion.
We need to say something though in the bid documents, hey, with this contract, you're gonna be expected to provide dispensers or not? And if we are okay with putting more holes and stuff or whatever, then...
I think we're okay with having them provide dispensers. They have to patch any, any holes that are created by their installation and if anybody wants to remove, if they remove a dispenser, they have to patch the hole from the removal.
But they may not have the towels that fit them, is what we run into a problem. Cause the vendor we have now replaced all of them when he came in.
I mean, the way that the previous bid was, was written said that you had to provide your dispenser, right?
At that point, we had never, it was a hodgepodge mixture of dispensers. We never really had gone out to bid before.
But it never said that we would retain ownership. So they provide it, we use it, basically we're using it for free, but we did have to buy the ones from over there at the jail.
Because we had underestimated the quantity.
Those I see as being ours, we bought those. These here, they're hanging on the wall, we're just using them. That's the way I would see it. And if the current vendor gets the bid and the same towel's fit and he's gonna use the same ones, then it should be less work that they have to do to, to work it. And if somebody else gets the bid, then they're gonna bring either the same machine in, cause I would say the current vendor's gonna take them down, if he wants them.
And that's why you needed that question answered, because they were, so that's why I think like that.
So even if someone did something that fits the current dispensers, we're going to ask them to put in new ones?
Why would we do that?
Well, I don't...
Cause we don't own these.
I think we own these.
I agree.
I think they're a fixture, they're attached to our property, they're ours.
I'm happy to fight that one in a courtroom if we need to. We're doing pretty good at that lately, if you haven't checked notice.
I'd like to see...
No offense intended, Greg.
I'd like to see the cost of the dispenser as a separate item in the bid. So, if Smith Janitorial or whoever bids it, I wanna see what the dispenser costs. Because I guarantee you it's zero. I mean, it's free. And I guarantee you, he's gonna put that on there, so, put dispenser and, you know, if, if there's some labor involved in it or whatever, but... If you're buying enough paper products, the dispensers are free, as well as the hand soap dispensers and everything else. They, that's, most, most janitorial people get those for free. So let's include it in the price and then if Dan wants to quote them at $30 apiece or whatever it is, that's, that's, that's fine, but that'll be part of the bid.
So we're gonna bid...
Can you circulate the bid document? Maybe that, maybe the solution here is to circulate the bid document and let us mark it up? That might be easier than trying to... Cause I'm not sure until we see the words, it makes any sense what we're actually trying to do.
I, I don't know, I don't agree with it, I think that whoever, they may have to pay something for the dispenser, it may be a discounted price, they may get them free too, I don't know. But that's, when they bid it, that's what they're anticipating is doing enough product to pay for the dispensers.
Agreed.
I mean, they are attached to the wall, but I see it as, if you're gonna insulate your house and you buy enough insulation, they'll let you use a blower to get the insulation up in there, you don't own the blower though, you gotta bring it back.
You're gonna leave it. You're gonna leave it.
I know it's not attached to the house, it's different, I don't have a better analogy right now.
There isn't one.
We don't have enough time.
There is a one, it's attached. If it wasn't attached, it wouldn't, I mean, you wouldn't have the discussion.
Well, it's attached, but they're letting us use it while we're using their product. Once we quit buying their product... Do what?
Hate this bid.
Yeah, I wanna see the bid documents before it goes out.
I think that's just the best way to do this one. Cause, cause we're, we're all kinda, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure if you write it the right way, that it solves all of our issues, that we would spend an hour sitting here trying to figure out the right way to write it. Maybe if you, if you take a crack at it and circulate it, maybe we can either agree or just tweak it a little bit and be good.
I don't disagree with putting it in there, that clearly specifies that we retain ownership of it, whether you charge us in the bid or you give it to us free in the bid.
Yeah, I think that's necessary.
That's gonna clear things up, cause I don't think the other contract really said that and so I, I see the argument on both sides, it's attached to the wall, but they're letting us just use it.
That's the one that kills you. Yeah, that was the killer.
And I don't think it'd be a bad idea with this one being a headache the way it is, is when we have a pre-meeting, it's to get them up here, everybody's gonna bid on it and have us up here too.
I think that's probably good.
We usually don't have this problem on, on anything. And so this one may be one. I figured that. We blame it on you, you blame it on us, it's a vicious circle.
Are you okay with that? Wow, it's getting testy in here. Holy crap! You, you should go. My advice is leave quickly.
Can you, uh, move some things around for the sheriff, I think he's gotta go.
Okay, I didn't know that, where's he at in here?
Um, I think he's wanting to talk about jury parking expenses.
Hit rewind please. The sheriff is? Hey Greg, what are you here for?
When we need Donnie over here, about 10 minutes before we need him here, we just need to call and give him some heads up, cause they got all kinds of jury trial...
Are you in a hurry?
Selection going on or something.
I've got, I've got a group to speak at Thomas Jefferson, a little...
Oh, wait, let's, why don't we go ahead and call Donnie and tell him, uh, 10 minutes from now, we'll probably be give or take, right, right, Donnell? Okay. Alright, Donnell, you have the floor.
Okay, um...
As long as it doesn't cost anything, we are 100% on your side.
Well, let me see then. The storage looks great, we've got more space now.
I hear, I hear positives about it, people like using the box system now that's out there. It's easier to get in and out of.
It's easier to get in and out of, of the boxes, yes, because we've given, you've all given us more room. So that's great. We do still have, um, 33 boxes that need to be microfilmed.
Okay.
To get that completed. The cost on microfilm is $450 per box. It's an estimate. So, we're looking at close to $18,000 for the 33 boxes.
Do we need to do that this year or can we put that in the budget for next year and...
It would give us more room, we still have an additional, um, we have about 200, close to 200 doors of files in the attic that still need to be, another additional, you can count on being two boxes. So double that, we've got about 400 boxes that are gonna have to go out to storage from the attic.
Most of those are limited use or are those active use?
They, I, it's a combination, traffic is also involved in there, there's 48 boxes of those.
And never pull those again, probably ever.
But we need an opportunity to go through those and get rid of them.
Okay.
But we still need to move them out, so we can do that.
I'd like to get rid of whatever we can get rid of, microfilmed it, I'd prefer to scan them, but we won't start that argument. So, I don't know, where would we get...
Remembering Rule 8, so you can see what kind of guidelines I have to go by and...
I still are.
And right now, the microfilm or the boxes that are off-site, um, haven't even met the retention records for destruction as of yet.
Where is the...
Well, if you, it just, it depends on what you're looking at, so maybe on page...
Okay, microfilmed, microfiche.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it tells you right there, it's the permanent record. Especially with any record retention of more than 20 years. Their recommendation is to microfilmed it.
Recommend then, ah, recommendation.
So are you purging, I don't know if you noticed...
We purge now, but there's...
8.03 says all case files may have the following documents purged at disposition.
And we do that now.
Okay. So what are we left with in these huge files?
Um, well, again, there's retention on most any kind of motions for a certain amount of years. Um, and then you've got petitions for a certain amount of years, other pleadings for another set, and then permanent record for judgments on any civil cases. Um, and that's what we're dealing with in regards to the 33 boxes.
Yeah, so we have a big case that, you know, generates two or three boxes of records.
Uh-huh.
When you purge it, you're down to a file folder, right?
No, because motions have to be kept for like 12 years.
Right, but no evidence is kept. That's three, copies of items received and evidence, that's all purged.
Okay.
Any discovery documents are purged, any duplicates are purged.
And we're purging as we go out, but it's still, if you have, let's say we have Forrest Lab, for instance, we have five filing cabinets full of just a Forrest Lab case.
But...
And when it goes to storage, because you have to keep that unless it's scanned in.
Yeah, but purging...
Purging is different.
Right, so you got five, you got five filing cabinets, you're gonna have that thing down to nothing, because most of that stuff is all gonna be evidence and exhibits.
I have to staff to be able to purge, I've got a half a person.
Okay.
So, we gotta deal, not only do we have to deal with, um, purging of the records, but we have to have an area to purge them, and I gotta have enough people to be able to keep up with the amount of, um, records that need to be purged. And that's 1,600 in the box of southeast storage.
I'll just take a person to run a box.
To what?
Go through a box.
Go through a box, well, we do them by case as they close, it depends on the case and how large it is and going through each and every pleading before. I would say, on, it just depends on the case, it could take a couple of days to go through everything for a part-time person that is expected to go, I mean, this person that's purging is also going off-site and getting four files and filing them away and then bringing them back here to make copies or whatever needs to happen. Um, and then she's purging the files and offering exhibits back to the parties at the end of the case. So that's the part-time person's job. So they've got a lot to do in regards to other than purging.
Okay, let me ask it a different way. If we hired for one year a employee for you, how many boxes, and they, all they did was this? They didn't go run out and pick stuff up, they, all they did was work at getting rid of these boxes, consolidating stuff down, cleaning out the attic, that's all they did.
Well...
How much can they get done in a year?
Well, I figured out a person that all they did was just, let's say, scan a box. So, while they're scanning, they're also going to be purging. So it would take them, um, 21 hours to clean out one box. So, that's basically a part-time person for one week to clean out one box.
That's nuts.
You would think, you would think it is, but it's really not.
Nah, it's crazy, I could do a box in an hour. What's the holdup? I mean, you throw paper on a scanner...
Purging.
That's easy.
Reviewing for purging, we're then having to document that everything has been actually, because it's the permanent record, if you scan it, it has to be permanent record. So, everything in there has to go in and be scanned individually, so we know what is the judgment, what's the petition, what's the motions. So then later, when we can purge, we can, we can remove those off as well. So, it, you have to verify that everything's in there, you can't...
21 hours, come on, do that.
I'm telling you...
Seriously?
Yes. I've been, we've been scanning for the last year.
I, I understand, I just, a box, a box, this big, okay? A box that big cannot take 20...
No, no.
I'm sorry, a box this big!
You're fishing story there.
Cannot take 21 hours!
Good one, Regley.
Nothing can take 21 hours!
No.
I mean, I got a law office, we use the big banker's boxes, we don't use the little ones. We have to go through every file, we have to look at all that same thing when we close them before they go downstairs. We do the exact same thing you're doing.
That's what's happening with the stuff that's out there, and I can't attest to what is out there in storage. All I know is that every box has to be gone through, not only that, but there's others that we know that we're gonna be moving to storage that doesn't even have an index for those records. They're gone, the judgments on some of these cases are gone. And we're, those are all gonna have to be recreated.
Just to make everybody nervous, we did a...
That means we need...
...expungement, not the expungement, but the same thing you're talking about. We did it with, uh, some of our volunteers. And we don't have nearly the volume we had, but our volunteers did it, it didn't cost anything. I don't know if you can generate volume.
I have to supervise them, I have to swear them in, I have to make sure that they're keeping the record. I, I gotta have supervision.
I'm telling you, hot dog, hot dog. I told you we should have a big hot dog roast. Mike, Mike, maybe when we open the new facility, we can have a celebration with a hot dog roast? I'll bring Mike, I'll bring marshmallows just to make sure we can have a family-friendly hot dog roast.
And, and just so you know, we've got, we're still working on sending cases, banning them all on. Still working, they're not completely...
I just wanna make sure I understand this, okay? You have 330, you have 400, give or take, boxes between the two sets, to get out of the attic, to clean out the attic and that. And if one person can do one box in 21 hours...
That's gonna take you 42,000 hours to get it done.
Which means we would need, considering there's, you know, give or take 2,000 working... You're talking 21 full-time employees doing nothing but looking through boxes.
Yeah.
That's nuts!
It would take seven years for three people to go through them. Full-time, that's all they did.
I'm gonna leave this up to you guys, because I'm gonna get so frustrated that, you know, I suggest what we do is...
There's a cost of scanning boxes, and that's two... There's a cost of scanning boxes, and that's $200 a box.
To scan?
To scan. That's what the going rate is. You could send them off.
How much did it cost Debbie to scan the, all those records? I mean, Melody and Betsy did it for a while. How much did it cost them to scan those records?
They were our employees, so they scanned them during the time.
There was no cost to the scanner. We bought it, right?
Yeah, we bought the scanner.
So what, what's the $200 a box scanning cost?
That's paying somebody else.
Pay someone else to do it.
So we hire somebody to scan if he done.
To take, to do this.
It's either, which still, 400, I still need 33 boxes microfilmed. That's completely up besides of the 2,000 boxes that are gonna be at off-site storage. And at $20,000 a box to scan, that's what the going rate is for scanning a box.
I'd hire somebody to do it instead of paying $200 a box. How long did it take Debbie to do a box over there? She do a couple, five boxes a day?
They were all the same size, and I wasn't indicating anything.
You got self-feed that will feed anything from this big to this big.
She has to put names on each section of different kinds of scans. We scan them all in one day. Whatever is in column with the judgment, so you gotta look.
You put a case number and names on it like we scan here on this big one here, and then you can search?
So, uh, why, why, why are we even gonna microfilm any, I mean, I'm, I'm ready to not microfilm anything. Just stick it out there and, and pull the files.
Judgment is permanent record. I gotta have it.
I understand that. Yeah, no.
Not only that, but the years from 1985.
I was scanning, not permanent. It's not deemed permanent.
This is 1985. That is required to be printed, even if I was to scan it on, 1985, after 25 years, I have to print it out for permanent record. It has to be microfilmed. So one case out there I've got already.
Okay.
There's no sense of you scanning anything.
Okay, so here's what I would like. I think the problem becomes we have, we have no kinda idea or order of what we need to keep and don't keep. I mean, you know in a particular file what you need to keep and don't keep, but you know, you talked about the traffic tickets.
Right.
Traffic tickets are effectively dead records. They never come out again.
They'll have to be kept for.
I understand that. I'm just saying.
And I get that. And most of the ones that are gonna come out of the attic, we're gonna be able to get rid of, but we still need to be able to get them down and out there so that we.
But we can put them in boxes, we can put them on pallets, we can shrink wrap them, we can stick them up in the rack, and we can worry about them another day. Because after Monday, there'll never be another piece of paper I'll ever have to see in the courthouse. And Donnie, I'm holding you personally responsible for that. Feel free, feel free to physically remove anybody who tries to put paper in the record. But I, I think if we could get an idea of, you know, how much of it can we shrink wrap and palletize? Cause then it starts to get us a better idea of space.
The best idea is to actually review them and offer them up for destruction. And that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. None of them are gonna be able to be, be able to just get rid of them and say that I'm never gonna be able to need them. And that's just the 40, we only have 48 drawers of traffic up, still up in the attic that need to be dealt with.
So.
Once they're gone, they're gone. Those are, can, I know.
Those are easies.
Those are gonna be easy. Now, some of them in traffic, because the way they are, the retention schedules now, some of them have to be kept for 12 years, not five.
DWI, yeah, DWI cases, FBI will hold them on.
So I've, and my own DWIs are 50 now.
Are they 50?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
So, like, I said, I gotta go through each one and then.
I, I'm for not doing anything. I wouldn't microfilm them. Let's stick them at Shepherd's and leave them. And you guys can pull the files when you need them. I mean, this is stupid. It's gonna cost us half a million to a million dollars by the time we pay people to do all this stuff.
Well.
For, for records that we may never use.
Consistency, and it does stay in here, and when we read through, if you want to, it does stay in the cooperating rule that once the case has been microfilmed, you need to continue that case for microfilm. Most, every single case that's out there between 1985 and 2002, which all other cases during that years have been microfilmed, those have got a poor part of microfilm. So if the original case has already been microfilmed, and let's say we get a motion to modify that comes in, so now I've got the second one. That, that case, part of the case is in paper format, part, part of it is in microfilm. Those need to be one consistent.
And that's the 33 boxes.
That's the 33 boxes.
Well, I, I understand that, and I guess that is one, I, we knew microfilm was expensive. We've gone through this over the years. That's something we have to do to be, the consistency thing is a requirement. I appreciate that. It's the going, it's, I think where Chris is, it's the other stuff.
Sure.
I mean, pull it out of the attic, stick it in boxes, write the dates on it, and let's shrink wrap it and get it off the floor. We can do that. It's still permanent. It's not, we're not throwing anything away.
We still need to be able to get into it. There's not a great judgment index anymore for those cases. From 2002 on up, as long as we micro, or if we could electronically scan those in, then we wouldn't need to have any of those that are out there from 2003 to, um, 2010. We got seven years. Those can be scanned in and destroyed. They can be, but the cost of that is going to be quite a bit.
Or we can, or we can put them in boxes, shrink wrap them, put them up high. We don't have to scan them. We don't have to destroy them. They're available.
Three per minute because I've gotta be able to get to them. I got three days in which to turn cases around. Three days. From the time that somebody walks into my office and says, I need a copy of this, I need to provide that with them by law within three days, or I have to tell them why I cannot.
It's in storage. It'll take us some time to get it out. That's pretty simple to me.
I, I understand your frustration, and where I'm at is that I've gotta see what you're proposing as an efficiency that will save us time in the future. And if, and if that, if that never comes to fruition, and if we're gonna spend a half million dollars, I mean, I could, we could afford to pay somebody for the next 20 years.
But I would like a filing system out there that's easily accessible, um, with no risk of injury, and that's shelving units out there where I can flat file, what I consider to be flat files, where they're not reaching in boxes. I'm not pulling boxes out. I'm not having to get up on a ladder, move boxes out, put boxes back in. I would like to have a, a straight filing system. So now, when I go look for a file, I have to do is just look by the year, and I find the file.
And how much is that?
It's gonna cost anywhere between 15 to 20,000 dollars.
And that solves all of our problems forever. Because we're going electronic. We're going electronic, so that solves everything going forward.
That would be ideal for at least pulling cases and moving cases. That will also take less space out of, um, over there.
I'm, I'm really trying.
I really don't want it to say that.
I know you don't, but I'm gonna make you say it because if you don't say it, we're gonna keep arguing. Will that solve?
But I'm willing to hopefully eventually get to the point where we can scan those, but right now.
I understand, but for, for at least the foreseeable future, if we invest $20,000 in putting these shelving units out there, does that just solve the problem with file storage?
Yes.
I'm all for $20,000 to solve the problem for file storage.
I still need.
No, there's no caveat, and you said yes.
Microfilm for 33 boxes.
For, for this year?
For, for this year. That, that, I won't have to microfilm.
So if we microfilm 33 boxes, we're done microfilming forever.
I can, I can't say forever because I'm not gonna be here forever. You know, when I, I'm just saying that I need those boxes microfilmed. The other ones, we can still work on.
So if we do the microfilming and the file system, for, as far as you see out in a reasonable duration, that solves all of our problems.
So 30, 33 boxes at $200 a box?
No, it's worth 50.
Yeah, it's, microfilming's expensive. So it's, so it's 18,000 plus 20,000. So if we get you $40,000, give or take.
You won't come back.
All problems are solved. You got one vote. Jeff?
Put in next year's budget. I'm just tired of microfilming.
That's why we do it. Let's do it. This shouldn't just be done. Why worry about next year? Let's just get done.
I'm, I'd rather do nothing with it. You know what? You got this part of it microfilmed, and you gotta go. Modification or whatever, then go pull it.
About the filing racks, are you at least okay with getting that done? That's a capital item.
For next year's budget. Where's it gonna come from? Where we getting the money?
How much room will you take up out there at Shepherd's?
It'll be less space. Depending on the filing system we get, it could be half, less than half of what we have right now, or at least a third.
It'll save us space either way.
It's gonna save a lot of space.
It is.
So there's a benefit there. Let's get done. Let's get it done. Why wait, you know?
We don't even know where we're gonna put them out there.
What?
The rolling time is a lot more than 20.
Let's put it out for bid and see where it comes out.
Donnell, will you, will you get with Debbie, work with Jennifer? Let's get the filing system out for bid.
Well.
We have to bid it. You know, the cabinet, cabinet stuff, yeah. We have to bid it. We don't have a choice.
Kinda like the doctor's office.
It's over, it's order five.
Those are under state contract.
Yeah, these are under government contract.
Oh, those are under state, and it's $20,000 for what you have here.
Estimated, I need to have someone come in and actually.
Have them come in and.
Have them come in, measure it, bring it back with a final dollar. And we'll, we'll argue, we'll, we'll argue internally about, uh, we'll argue internally about microfilming. I hate it as much as anybody does.
I don't like it either.
Which is why I like the option of never having to do it again after this.
Does Oscar not allow digitally retention of records?
Yeah, they do.
For 25 years, and you have to print them all out. Because digital records are not deemed secure.
I am supposed to every three years go through a microfilm and determine whether or not that's secured and whether or not it needs to.
Thank you, Donnell. We will solve, I promise you, we will solve your problems.
Thank you.
Donnie.
I don't know about that. We might help.
I think we've been arguing this all six, seven years.
We have argued microfilming since the day I walked in the door.
It's not just you, Donnell. I've been arguing this, I've argued it every time.
Brenda, I've argued it with other interim clerks.
Hello, Donnie.
All right, Donnie, talk to us.
I need to get you to pay the parking bill. We have $1,234.
Who else needs money today?
All right, we, we.
If you look, those are, those are the dates, those are the dates we had juries.
We par, we have, I understood we had parking with the city down the hill. We're back behind there, one of the two places, right Debbie?
Yes, down there. We used to park all the jury.
So, I don't know why we're paying for parking garage.
Well, this is on a multi-day trial. It's only a 14 or 12 a year during those times to keep them walking back and forth. All the trials, we, one single day trials, they don't park there. It's just on multi-day trials.
It's costing about $500 a month, the last months that we've seen there.
Well, that's January and February. That's when we had the most jury trials during that time. And this, this year, you gotta remember, we've got Judge Beadham has three three-week trial. Judge Joyce has two three-week basis. You don't wanna park in the parking garage?
Why can't they just?
Walk back and forth?
Once a day. Not walk back and forth 19 times a day. You're a jury trial. The only break you have, the only break you have is lunch. And I've sat through enough of Judge Beadham's trials. You've sat through enough of Judge Joyce's trials to know that lunch is not a two-hour expedition to go all over town and run your shopping errands. It's quick, let's get back to trial.
Judge Shaw gave you 40 minutes yesterday.
You can't, even if you're parked in the garage, you can't go anywhere.
I understand.
So.
And we do pay for the trolley too, so I'm not sure why we use the trolley.
Those are for sequestered trials.
No, the.
No.
Oh, is that the panels? We use the trolley for panels? Oh, okay, that's for the bigger.
And that's when you have 80 or 90 or 100.
We use vans for the sequestered jury, don't we?
Yes.
Okay, that's right.
And we have two of those coming up next year.
Right. That's not my problem. That's next year. The other day, alas. You know, the beauty of that statement is, I'm gonna get to say that more and more as this goes on, Jeff.
You're enjoying it more and more. I can tell.
This is a bill for mostly January and February when we had all the big trials.
I mean, we've incurred it. We might as well pay it. I'm just really unhappy about that because, you know, our employees that we provide parking for work very hard. They do have to go to and from their cars periodically. And aside from the small number of spots we have right on site, and it's a small number of spots. You know, everybody else is having to walk up and down the hill to get to their cars. Um, you know, and, and they do it every day. You know, it's 200 and something days, working days in a year. I mean, it's, that's every day. I don't know, it's just. A, a two-block walk is just not that long a walk, Donnie. It's not that long a walk.
You're paying guys that are $18, you know.
You're doing, I don't think, I don't think you should get paid at all to be on jury duty. Frankly, I think that you ought to be thrown in jail if you've refused to go to jury duty.
We don't have it.
It's your, it's your civic duty. You're gonna be a citizen of the United States of America.
Some of our jurors are 60, 70 years old coming up here and doing this, but.
You can walk up and down a hill, can't you?
We've had that two heart attacks going up and down from the parking. One was in the courthouse and one was down here. One died across the street and I'm in the chair. So, that was walking up, you know, that's.
I mean, you know, it's incurred. I guess we gotta pay it.
How do we not get reimbursed for this from the state?
We can reimburse for anything by state.
I mean, and it, it says state versus whoever, so shouldn't they pay for that?
It's almost every inmate we house.
I know, I'm throwing that out there too. So what are we paying for the lot down the hill?
We're not, you're not paying for that down there.
We don't pay anything for that down there?
We have free parking in Jeff City. It's the dirty little secret. There's a lot of free parking around here.
Well, the city provides it to us.
Yeah.
But it's just getting less and less and less each year when you go down.
What, what would, what would the cost of the trolley be versus the cost of?
It's hard to use the trolley because you don't know what time you're gonna dismiss during the day. If an attorney isn't ready and prepared, he comes into court, you might have an hour or two break, and you might leave early at 3 o'clock. And you might be there at 6 or 7 o'clock, or 8 o'clock, or 9. That's the difference. You can't tell what time you're gonna start, what time you're gonna quit.
You know what time you start though, right? You start it, so you start at 8:30, you give them a ride, going back is downhill. No, I'm dead serious. I'm, you, how many of them have a heart attack going downhill?
I don't, if you don't wanna pay it, I don't have a problem. It's like pay the bills already.
Oh, I, I don't like pay it, no. But I, I would try to make it, you know, somewhat easier on them when you're having to walk up a hill. My mom had to walk up the hill too. She's, you know, 67-year-old, got some bad knees. Us kids were hard on her.
The jury trials lasted till past 4:30. Um, it was winter. It was snowing and freezing.
It was cold as.
Missouri.
I mean.
I mean, that's what these incur.
It's two blocks. I go to St. Louis. I go to Kansas City. If you can park within two blocks of a building, you're just the most happy person in the world for parking two blocks away. You go to, I don't know, we are so spoiled, you know, you go to Walmart and people will drive around and around and around the parking lot because they will spend 15 minutes driving along the lot because they don't wanna park seven cars back. They gotta park in the first three. God.
We could just kinda clear out some of these spots back here and make them park down here.
Hey, there you go. How many clerk spots do you guys have? How many court spots? I think the judges can walk, the bailiffs can walk, the court reports can walk. We can use those as jury spots.
That'd be our wellness program.
I'm not so sure that one's gonna go over too well, Donnie.
No, it's not.
Walking's great for ya.
It's not. It hurts. Well, I call it running. I'm still hurting. That trouble's getting up the steps. If I ever get chased by a bear, I'm shooting somebody in the knee so I can beat them at least. I think I'm gonna be the slowest one.
I'm, I'm in favor of just paying the bill, but let's, let's not do it anymore.
Let's come up with a solution, Donnie. This is just not.
Check with, check with the city's transit. I mean, them buses are running around empty half the time. I mean, surely they could run some people up here.
We got a van. We got a van at 8:30, run them up here and drop them off. They can walk back.
That parking garage is the most heavily demanded parking garage in town. Everybody wants those spots. All right, we'll pay it. We'll figure it out.
Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry to make, to wait so long, Donnie. Thanks, Donnell.
I enjoyed.
1234.
1200?
1234.
No, no, that was, those are jury fees. We're just talking about the parking was 1,200. He's just using that to show how many trials there were. That's the jury fees.
Oh, okay.
All right. Hey, Betty. Can you hand me those real quick? Second, yeah. Second reading, budget adjustment number five, which is $988 for a refund from AT&amp;T. I entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Melissa, send call roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, budget adjustment numbers, oh, sorry, budget adjustment number five is approved. Budget adjustment number six, $4,499, which is a. Budget adjustment number six, four thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which is a refund of a premium paid, I presume on insurance. I entertain a motion to approve budget adjustment.
Second.
Motion second call roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, by roll call vote, that's approved. Approval of sole source for specific items from Vitacare.
Yes, sent you an email with the attachment, hopefully that's on the redas, but Vitacare, they are the exclusive manufacturing, therefore provider for that system, so it is, it is dedicated to sole source.
Gotta have it, gotta have it, if they're the only ones that do it, they're the only ones that do it. I entertain a motion to approve sole source for Vitacare regarding, is this the-
EZI O system?
Thank you, EZI O system, as opposed to trying to say some of these words that are very, very long.
So moved. Second.
Motion second call roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, by roll call vote, that's approved. Sole source of specific items from Osage Industries.
Specific to ambulance remounts in order to maintain the integrity and warranty, which is lifetime with the box. When we get into the remounting phase of the fleet, as of Monday, we had all the fleet replaced. Now we segue into the remount.
I wanted to just make sure we all heard that, we now have all the ambulances replaced, we have nothing but new ambulances now.
All uniform.
We finally got that done, all same, all uniform, we finally got that done, that was something we promised when we passed that, and I'm glad we finally pulled it off, took a while.
They're all new and they are uniform, everything is the same. If an employee gets in one ambulance and they get in the other ambulance, it is a sterling copy mirror of the same thing. In order to maintain the integrity of uniformity and the lifetime warranty we have when we do the remounts, as long as Osage does the remount, it maintains that lifetime warranty. If someone else does, it negates that lifetime warranty.
That's how they keep the bid for sure then, we always use them anyway, they've been the lowest bid, but-
Well, they haven't been always the lowest bid, they've been the best bid, but-
Best bid, no question.
Yeah, that's right, we did have the other, the Chevys or Fords.
So, I don't really have a problem with this, but I do have a question. So, when we get these ambulances, the warranty for the chassis is?
Specific to the manufacturer, whether it be Ford or Chevy.
Right.
Apparently, we have Chevys, and it's a commercial type warranty, it's only like a three-year, thirty-six, it's not a bumper-to-bumper, anything like that. There is some manufacturer's warranty with the chassis, but once you exceed the limitations set forth by the manufacturer, it falls back on us, from the box back. You take a twenty-mile trip to Lynn, they fix it, there is much more of a substantial warranty with the box.
So, the war, so the warranty is from Chevrolet?
Correct.
For the chassis?
For the chassis, which in the past has, has been a pretty limited warranty.
It still is a very limited warranty.
I mean, there's a whole lot of things, I mean, now you say three-year, thirty-six, and that's, that's kinda powertrain, I mean, a lot of other things haven't been warranted, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
So, what's the warranty for the box?
The box?
That it won't fall apart, or?
Yeah, it's a, it's a structural, lifetime paint, wiring, things of that nature, pretty much anything associated with the door slit in the box back is where you get into the twenty-mile lifetime trip, from the slit in the head forward, or stuff that the manufacturer's recommended.
Okay.
Okay, I'm okay with it, it makes sense, man. I entertain a motion to approve sole source for the box.
Remounts.
Remount, sorry, remounts for Osage Industries.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second call roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, by roll call vote, sole source approved. Okay. I know Greg's gotta get out of here, let's, all sorts of people probably need to get out of here, except for you and for us. Noise ordinances and livestock issues.
Okay.
They've been talking about this for about as long as we've been talking about files too, so, this is funny.
So, anyway, I wanted everybody to be here because what, what seems to be an issue is something that we have no control over, but yet, it's, it's in a, it's a nuisance, and by law, that, you know, you have a right to, what, how's it read, Jill? A peaceful place to dwell. And so, you know, we have, we have roosters in Westview Heights, we have dogs all over this county, and we have, you know, other animals or whatever that, that is a hindrance upon your rights to-
Bears.
It's a nuisance, so, you know, I'm just, I'm here asking what we can do, where do we need to go? You know, if we have to go to the legislature to get something done, I'm not opposed to doing that, but we have to come up with something to-
We do have an ordinance on the pigs, so-
Well, the, part of the thing is, you know, if you, if you live in an urban environment, you sacrifice certain things to live in an urban environment. You know, I live inside Jefferson City, I have dogs.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I either have to have them on leash or have them visible fence, or keep them in my house. Okay? So, so I have a leash law. My mom, I grew up out in the county, we let our dogs run. Sometimes they ran the road, then you got another dog. But, that was the nature of living in the county, and, I mean, people are, people make conscious decisions on where they live. The, we've had the dog issue, the rooster issue's relatively new, we've had the dog issue up here, it happens about every other year, maybe. Southwood Hills has come to us, I, I know I've dealt with them three specific times, probably more than that, but I can recall three times, separate times, they've come up and said they want what Westview Heights has. Westview Heights has a leash ordinance, for lack of a better term, that we approved, but they did it by petition, and they got seventy-five percent of the landowners in Westview Heights to sign a petition, and we said, okay. That's before my time, but, makes sense, you know. My problem is with going, going to legislature to get authority, even us really undertaking authority is, people that choose to live in the county, choose to live in the county. And that means maybe you get the rooster in the morning, as opposed to living inside the city where, you know, you won't get the rooster in the morning. What do you do, you know?
And I, I understand that philosophy too, but, and I spoke with the sheriff, and it's like, at some point, people are gonna get mad enough at their neighbors that something's gonna happen that we don't want to happen. And, and it's, it's gonna happen, I mean, just- Well, and I realize that, but, you know, so, so because your neighbor's, you know, an inconsiderate neighbor and allows his dog to bark all the time, and I'm gonna throw him hot dogs with antifreeze in them or something, you know, I mean, I, you know, I don't know what people are gonna do, but people are gonna do-
Sheriff used to do that.
People are gonna do what they're gonna do.
Not you, not you. A par one used to send out, that was their solution to dogs that had issues.
I mean, I, I just don't feel comfortable telling somebody, well, you know, that dog shows his teeth at you and crosses your property line, and you drill him.
No problem there.
But, you know, and that's, that's fine and dandy till that person sues you civilly.
He can't, once you're on their own property.
Well, can't?
Can't, okay, I'm sorry, anybody with a hundred dollars and a filing fee, which is the filing fee, can sue anybody. But, that's a frivolous suit because they're on, that, when the animal comes on your property, you have the rights.
In particular, if it comes to you or your animals, or a property.
Or if you're walking down a public right-of-way, and an animal threatens you, absolute right to destroy the animal. It is, it's not even negotiable, it's absolute right. Now, you're right, it's gonna cause some hard feelings, the problem is, and the, you know, let me get on my high horse, and I'm gonna apologize for it, but it's, you know, I had to do that already once today, so I might as well do it again.
Just don't call me regular.
The problem is, is, again, watch it, you keep acting like it, I'm after here. The problem is, is, it's a tiny fraction of people that are inconsiderate. And we're gonna then try to pass an ordinance or a resolution or a law to infringe on ninety-nine percent of the people because of that tiny percent of people that are jerks. Be nice, I won't use it better. And, and it's not, I mean, that's what we do with everything, you know, the next thing we're gonna know, we're gonna ban cars because there's one percent of the people that don't know how to drive their cars.
Or they have allowed diesel at five-thirty in the morning, they're taking their kid to White's.
Yeah.
There you go, motorcycles, chainsaws.
On a fairly consistent basis, off and on, off and on consistently. And, and one lady was a prime example, she came in, and she was talking to Lieutenant Hill, and she goes, "I don't mind bark, I don't mind the crowing, but I can't stand the bat."
I know who that is.
You know, it, it ends the same issue, so, what's the line that you draw? And that's the heart of it, because when you draw that line, then we're responsible for holding that line. Yet, sometimes there are lines that shouldn't be drawn, others that should, but we gotta be real discerning on which lines we draw.
And you have, what, four acres?
Yeah, I have six acres, yeah.
Six acres, and you have a rooster?
Yeah.
Okay, and you live, I know where your house is, that's why I'm using the example, you live, your house is relatively close to the road. The rest of your land's around you and behind you.
Well, I'm three-hundred feet off the road, but, you know-
If I built my house right at the closest point to your property line, whether that's left, right, or across the road, and your rooster stands in your front yard and crows, it's gonna annoy the heck out of me. But, you got six acres, are we gonna say you can't have a rooster within six acres? Or are you gonna say you can't have a rooster within three-hundred feet of another person's property line? And if it's three-hundred feet, maybe that works great for me, I'm getting older, my ears aren't as good as they used to be, but Kristen's young, and that rooster's gonna bother her at five-hundred feet. Wouldn't ever, would never get there.
Well, and it, to me, it's, you know, my situation's a little bit different because I'm in a more rural area, but, in, in Westview Heights proper, if you live in the middle of Westview Heights, yeah, you've got four or five people within an acre. If, if you live at the edge of Westview Heights, yeah, you, you, yeah, bridal spur, you abut farm ground, and, you know, you've, you've gone to a nuisance. You have encroached a nuisance.
And in some cases, often it's a principle like, like the sportsman's club, somebody buys a piece of property next to the sportsman's club, is upset about the sound of gunfire at the ranges.
It, it was there before, yeah, you came to the nuisance.
Yeah, and I, and the problem is, you just end up with jerks. They don't care about other people, they only care about themselves.
Well, I, I would agree.
And, you know, it makes it, if it's a big enough problem in Westview Heights, they can circulate a petition. They got seventy-five percent to have a leash law, maybe they can get seventy-five percent to have a rooster law. Sounds to me, if it's actually a problem, they could get a hundred, well, one less than a hundred percent signed.
I mean, I, I just struggle with, I struggle with telling people that there's nothing I can do. I mean, that to me is just, it's BS, I mean, and, and maybe there's nothing we can do as a county, but it's like, you know, you know, I was talking to another attorney, it's like, well, these people can bring a, a civil lawsuit against him for a nuisance, and so, at least there's something that they can do, and hopefully, you know, those, those neighbors and those landowners can go ahead and file that suit. And, you know, maybe it'll stick, maybe it won't, I don't know.
But we can only pass ordinances and resolutions that apply to everyone, or to a lot, you know, I guess we can do some geographic restrictions, but by and large, we have to apply everything to everyone. We can't do the one shot.
Sure.
For one person. And frankly, sometimes, there isn't anything you can do. And, and I'm not sure we should always be coming to government saying, fix my problem. And I think of my kids, and if they don't study for the test, and they get a bad grade on the test, and they come to me and say, "I got a bad grade on the test, what are you gonna do?" Sometimes I have to say, "I can't do anything. You have to do something, you gotta study harder." I can't do that. And maybe that's what some of these situations are, is, and it's an unfortunate call, we've had, were you up here for the Southwood Hills? And we've had that same conversation with the Southwood Hill folks, saying, you can circulate a petition, and we'll use Westview Heights as an example, if you're not, if you're not able to do that, and they all say, well, there's no way we're gonna be able to get that done, we say, then, there's nothing we can do. You can do things, but we can't do things.
There's a book out called unintended consequences, and one of the unintended consequences of this, you have to look at two things. One, ask, need to enjoin the prosecutor's office on what they're willing to prosecute. The state laws, disturbance laws are, have a pretty high threshold, and if you reduce that, that's, their work goes well. The other one is if you do much more, I, I literally, if you do anything else with animal control, we have to have another animal control officer be here. And, and every so often, depending on how much that broadens, that's gonna be, that's gonna be problematic, and I don't know how much money we're willing to invest in that as well.
Wish we had a happy-
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm willing to give that to either, either law or the public.
I was waiting for that to come up, that's all Larry's sitting way in the back.
You want it, Mike?
I mean, but there's, there's nothing, if zoning were to pass, that would, that we could do at some point to enact some type of ordinances within high-density residential areas.
We get zoning, we do all sorts of stuff.
Okay.
Okay, we can do all sorts of stuff after we have zoning, except for grandfathered properties. So, if somebody gets their chicken coop out there in Westview Heights before we get zoning, that property is gonna be protected as long as the chicken coop's there. Once they take-
Some issues with zoning about regulating livestock.
That's not livestock.
It's not, it's regulating livestock in areas that are-
Agriculture.
agriculturally zoned, if you zone an area commercial, or you zone an area residential, if there's existing livestock, you cannot do anything. But if there's not existing livestock, you can prohibit it from coming in. But that's only in those areas, and all agriculture's grandfathered.
You know, the bad thing is, and we ran into it with Southwood Hills, is you got the one bad egg in there. And I know you don't like telling somebody, "I can't do anything," and I've had to tell them the same thing, that, you know, this isn't the answer you wanted, it's all I've got. I, you know, I don't know what else we can do, that's not gonna affect the whole county, and everybody else doesn't want it because of this one bad egg, so.
Well, it's not that you can't say, well, you can't do anything, it's, it's entice that dog to come on your property and drill him.
Well, you get the rooster, that's cage, I mean, you can't-
I don't know.
That, that's even more frustrating to me, 'cause, I mean, you start, you get a BB gun, and, "Come on, fly over here, he's, I'm in a cage, I can't come over there." So, you're, you're stuck with that one, the dog one is easy to take care of, you, you know, right between the eyes, but, you know, the rooster's different if he's on somebody else's property, and it is frustrating.
And, I mean, some of these people think of their pets as, just like kids.
No, no, they think of them much more highly than children.
Well, whatever, so, I mean, that, it comes a huge issue, so.
Impounded dog and towed vehicle, and you find out what the priorities are.
Do all three at once and see which one comes out first.
I'm hearing which comes out, it's dog, vehicle, kid.
Okay.
I don't know, if you come up with some other idea, we-
I think zoning will give some tools to address these issues on a going-forward basis, going backwards, it's tough. Okay?
Yep.
Alright, demolition of existing storage facility at EMS, I don't know, do you have something else here? Okay.
I asked Christie to come over for the noise ordinance on livestock issues.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Demolitions on existing storage facility, where are we at on that?
Just want a direction of which direction you wanna go.
It's like three, as I, as I recall, it was like three thousand dollars or something like that, and they keep the materials.
Yep, thirty-five hundred dollars, I think was it.
Thirty-five hundred?
I would, well, I would like to have had us be able to keep the materials for that price, if I wanna keep it moving. We don't have to bid it down.
Can't we negotiate just keeping some of it, or whatever, or, I mean, are you okay with some of that? I mean, I just don't want a pile of stuff.
We chatted about it, and sometimes, we're gonna spend more time and effort keeping it, storing it, than selling it, than saying, you know what, get it out, get it out of our way, so.
I mean, Greg had said that he had some use for some plywood or something, so, I mean, if he can get what he needs, and he's gonna use it, I mean- You guys good with that?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, if they'll let you hold on to whatever we can store and keep, that'd be great, I mean, there's a big steel beam in there, we can't just haul it off to recycling and get something for it.
I'm good at making storage spaces.
Okay. That was easy. I like that, that's the one I like.
Do you wanna get another bid for electric, or just go with what we got?
Amoresco said they would make it safe for them to take that down.
I wasn't there at the meeting, so I don't know.
That's what Scott said, said there's no reason we should have to get an electrician out here, you just take the supply out, and Scott said that they could make it safe for them. They'd have to take all the other wiring and lights down, but they would take away the supply, they would get it cut off. Were you not there when we talked about that?
I don't remember hearing that.
Well, double check with him, make sure, 'cause.
'Cause that's gotta come off before that building comes down.
Well, you just turn, you, you mean, do you just turn off the supply to that location, strip everything out? And then they're gonna come in and build, they're bringing electricians in to do the actual war, building work, they're gonna.
All we have to do is desensitize it, they'll take care of the rest. We don't have to evade any electricity, it's, it's literally have an electrician come in.
Yep.
And, and then.
And they said they would do that.
You get the power off here, so it's not in here anymore. That's all I'm worried about. That's what I'm thinking, that's all they care about, 'cause they're gonna probably tear the wires out and recycle the copper in there.
Yeah, it's just that they've got a hot wire coming into a panel there, so they've gotta take it and.
They'll shut it off junction, it, or pull it out of the breaker box, or whatever.
Check with Amoresco, I mean, we got a price from Gooch to terminate it or something, so, I mean, if Amoresco can do it, great. If, if not, I don't know.
Scott said they could do it, and they'd take care of it.
Just confirm, confirm it with them.
Okay, if they can't, do we need to come back, or?
I don't know, did you get somebody else?
I haven't yet, no.
They can't pay somebody, it's not gonna take that much to shut that off.
I know.
For that price, they can take care of.
Just confirm it with Amoresco, if it's a problem, get back to us. I don't think it's gonna be.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we're done.
Well, I gotta get some clarification.
GBH is gonna tear the stuff out, Greg's.
I need to know the timeframe and when they'll be done, so I can call Amoresco. There's a seven-day lead time.
Perfect. For thirty-four hundred dollars?
Just get an agreement from him.
Get an agreement with them.
And I need a worded that their work includes hauling away stuff, not materials in lieu of payment.
No, it's, yeah. Yeah, they've got prevailing wage included and, and removals, so.
Tell us, we just need some kind of agreement from them, we can't do it. I obtain a motion to award the contract and agreement to GBH for amount not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars to do the demolition of the existing storage facility at EMS, negotiate the provisions of what materials stay and go.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, call roll.
That was worded very well. Yes.
Yes. By a roll call, but that's approved. There you go. You can work, she's worked with me before on these.
You got it recorded, huh?
Yep. Discussion of proposed internet and ethernet upgrades to the county. Dale?
As you guys know, we did last year, uh, we had a three-year agreement, and we enhanced all the connections between courthouse and all of our remote sites, EMS, oh, of course, Public Health. Uh, we doubled our bandwidth from one point five to three megabits to those places. And in that year, we have found painfully that that's still not enough.
That's not a surprise.
Many times at Public Works that he can't get work done because of the bandwidth. And just two weeks ago, we were upgrading to the new, uh, all-tier system for Public Health. We couldn't even get the, uh, actual installation program downloading. I drove back over here and did it, and drove back over as faster than downloading it, so. Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I'm sure EMS has got the same situation, I just haven't.
Ten what?
But, uh, the, uh, the proposal is, is that we go, uh, go from the three to ten meg, uh, connections for each of the three remote sites, and then bumping the entire bundle to fifty meg at the courthouse, 'cause we split that fifty meg after the three, three tens, and then twenty meg for our internet. Uh, the one problem that has come up is not, it, the, the original proposal from CenturyLink was additional nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars a month. The problem being, they want to reintroduce the thirty-six-month term, instead of using it on the thirty-six-month term we're already using. So.
They want a new contract.
Right. And Jill is indicating that we'd probably have to go back and re-bid all that, and, I don't know, that's, that's the dilemma. I mean, we need it, I mean, we need it now, as well.
And so, I have asked them also to give us a price of what it would cost to just extend our contract to the end of what we currently have. And I have not got that price figure, I'm sure it will be higher, but I have not got that. So, we can table this, or, just so you guys are aware of what we're doing here.
I mean, I guess we need to hear back from CenturyLink.
Yeah, I, I mean, I did.
I think if we go out for another three-year period, we probably do have to bid it.
I mean, and that kinda sucks, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think bumping up what we currently have could be considered sole source, or the remainder of the contract, because obviously, we can't have somebody else doing that. But, yes, to extend it for another three years.
Well, and the other thing that's kinda confusing is the fact that we actually changed, no infrastructure, oh, nothing, no wiring, nothing changes at all. It's just they're making it more availability at the central office, so they're not, there's nothing new in going to any buildings or anything. It's just turning up the speed, is all it is. So, that's why I'm just wondering if it's, if it's still a sole, maybe it could be a sole source because of that stipulation, and I don't know.
It, it would, I think I agree with Jill. It would be if we were adding it on to the existing contract, if we're going out for a new contract, I think that changes it then.
Well, you talk to CenturyLink and let them know they're gonna have to re-bid it if they don't give us the same price per year.
This guy's just, they're, they're, we're on our third different person now as our rep, and it's, it's.
If we gotta go talk to Greg, let's talk to Greg, I think.
And I did put that to them, saying that basically, we will probably have to bid this if they can't offer us a price to finish this contract. So, uh, he was busy, so he did back to me in two, three days, and I've heard from him.
Follow up with them, and if that doesn't work.
Get hold of us, we'll call, uh, what's Greg's last name?
Gaffkey still over there?
No, the other Greg, the new Greg. No, the new Greg. There's, the other guy that took his place is also Greg, so.
What, what was the cost we were paying currently?
Can't think of his name.
Well, uh, like, for each location, it was two hundred and seventy-seven dollars a month. They broke to four ninety, um, for each location. So, those would be coming out of Public Works, uh, the Health Department and EMS.
I'm happy to pay that.
I mean, we need the bandwidth, I don't think there's any doubt about that.
And, and it's a, it's a deal where you have latency, because you, you couldn't, you're always behind the curve anyway. Then you start opening it up, and you still start finding out how much you still have to.
It's only gonna get worse, too.
So, it's about another nine hundred a month?
Nine eighty-sixty-two.
But remember, we're, we're tripling what they're getting at their sites, and we're gonna double ours.
At some, at some point, we're gonna have to actually seriously sit down and have to look at a hundred meg.
Yeah.
We're not gonna get a choice, we're gonna run out of.
Well, I mean, if, if you guys wanna entertain, I mean, if we get into a bidding situation, we need to bid, that's probably.
Oh, I agree, if we bid, we have to look at a hundred meg, 'cause.
Well, this is a.
Ten meg's gonna cause, you two are gonna have issues with ten meg within a very short period of time.
And that was a deal, one, their, their new product actually has some enhanced stuff that we can't turn on because of the bandwidth issues, so. It's just.
Maybe we should bid it.
Yeah, I mean, is this an ethernet connection, or it's a dedicated connection, or is it?
Yeah. We got fiber, fiber runs into the courthouse, and there was fiber runs to every building. And it's centralized, they have the big pipe that runs to us, and then it's, we have the equipment down here that splits out equally to each of the remote sites, and then we have one for the internet. So, it all holds up to be, in this case, would be fifty, but if we make it a hundred, then we would have whatever chunk we would have for the entire county that now uses that internet. So, that's every building, so the connection between the two is really, you're talking about phones and email and those kinds of things internally.
It's easy, it's these electronic record systems that are gonna break our back. They're gonna break our back.
Can we break the contract with CenturyLink, though?
I don't, uh, we're in a three-year signed agreement, and it ends in November two thousand and fifteen.
Well, I mean, the other thing, though, is if they can give us, if they can get, continue or finish up our existing three-year, which is two thousand and fifteen sometime. I mean, do you guys wanna entertain a hundred meg and split?
You may have to look at more than that. I mean.
Well, I don't know what they're gonna offer.
I don't know what their max capacity is.
Who else would be able to supply it?
I was talking to Richard, I was talking to Richard this morning, he thought maybe socket, but he, he said that socket would have to go pull all their own cables, so it could take months to do that, so.
I don't think, I don't think you can get gig service here.
No, no.
I think, I think Columbia is the closest place that has gig service.
See, that's what happened to Jeff City, was we could never get anything. I mean, it used to be five or ten was as good as you got, and now we got, they're offering fifty, but, uh, I don't even know what's, you know, what the maximum availability is.
I know, state even complains about their bandwidth issues.
Yeah, we're just not a, you know, Columbia's, it's a lot of that stuff.
Well, they got that line, it runs down I-70.
But anyway, we definitely need to go at least this far.
That's gonna be, I mean, I, I think that's something we need to probably have a, love a long-term planning discussion on. I mean, it would be great if we could just upgrade it short-term, so we, but I think that's something that's gonna have to have a long-term discussion, because everything we do is converting to electronic. And particularly the federal government side, and it's, I'm pointing fingers, it's you two. The federal government side continues to put more and more mandates on with data security, data protection, volume of data. The, the push and pull is gonna become enormous.
Well, the, the one good thing to remember is the fact we're like, going to next year before we have to really re-bid anyway, so, I mean, we could.
That's something I ought to look at.
That's right, but I mean, from, from CenturyLink's standpoint, I mean, they're, they're gonna wanna lock you in for three years, 'cause they're not gonna wanna bid against somebody, and, and that brings, I mean, are they a sole source?
Well, like I said, I was talking to Rich about it this morning, and there's certain features, like quality of service and stuff, that like MediaCom, even though MediaCom offers a hundred meg, uh, doesn't offer those features that we need for the voice connections and stuff like that. So, that kind of, you know, it kinda knocks out some of the participants.
Mm-hmm.
Socket, I think, would do it, but I don't know what, I've never seen them offer high, that high a bandwidth, so, I don't know. But that's back to the bidding thing again. You know, it, it, it's just like, you're just running these walls, and you just gotta deal with them. But we need something short-term anyway to get them, to get, to keep productive.
Well, see what they come back with, and then, I think that's something that we need to keep a reflection on in the next cap budget. We may end up having to look at a real expenditure item there to get that done, 'cause that's an investment that'll pay off long-term.
Absolutely, yeah. You're never, you'd never have enough. I mean, there's no such thing as too much, so.
Get ahold of them and try to work on adding it to this contract, and if you can't get ahold of somebody, holler. I don't care, holler at me, and I'll talk to Greg.
Yeah, but this is the point that he hasn't responded.
I don't know.
Who's Greg? I don't know what his name is. It's Greg.
They, they've all changed.
I know, it's, it's all turnover. I mean, I'd go to Doug Galloway if I had to go to somebody, he's their lobbyist, but, just 'cause I know him.
Yeah, we.
Jan's gone.
If we lost ourselves.
Baker.
Kevin Brown?
It's Greg Baker.
Greg wants to talk to us. Or Kevin wants to talk to us.
Greg Baker.
About that, I mean, he's got his own deal on him. They have a little box they fit in, and you can get outside the little box.
Okay.
Greg Baker.
Greg Baker. I didn't know him.
He's been at the community's meeting, and.
Is he here in Columbia or Kansas City, or?
He's here.
He took Gaffkey's place there in Jeff. So, and I don't know.
Okay, but anyway, we'll.
He'll be able to hold on to it, but.
Let us know. Thank you. Williams Keepers engagement letter.
Well, um, you know your concern about we, the community, then?
Yeah, yeah.
So, Kristen went around and got, uh, most of the departments to sign this letter with you.
Okay.
The elected officials.
Who refused?
Richardson.
Mark Richardson.
That's it?
I didn't go to Marilyn, she doesn't have much of an actual.
Hey Marilyn, can you do me a favor and sign that letter saying that you follow the law?
I follow the law.
Yeah.
And I'm confused, that's your, you really have authority over this, just.
I know. But we don't have authority over him. That's why he's gotta sign it. My concern's, my concern's not who has control of the money. My control is who has control of the operations. Because, yeah, we can say we're not gonna spend somebody's money, and, and we can lay down on that, but we're certain that they're following all the laws and, like, proper steps, and I don't know that we can assert that.
Well, the problem is, it, it's kinda like the surtax thing, even if a different officer, office holder messes something up, or gets screwed up along the line.
It comes back to us.
Cole County, it's us, so, that's what this is saying.
If, if, I would, I'm willing to sign it with those signatures on there, and a typed-in, and we'll have to type it in or write-in statement saying that we do not represent, warrant that any compliance is being done in the prosecutor's office, and if Chris refuses, or the assessor's office. And that will be a huge red flag to the auditors, and they will go up to those offices and, next year, they'll wanna sign the letter be. And I'm fine with that, I don't, what do you think? I mean, you're the auditor, well, deputy auditor, soon-to-be auditor.
I think ultimately, you're responsible.
I know we are, but.
I, I mean, in our reality, I think it comes back to you, even if they don't comply, it comes back to you.
But I know that, but I, but I can't sign something saying we do comply, without other people saying we do comply. Which, I mean, all these offices have signed it, I don't have a problem with it. The only, you know, if, if Mark will not sign that, I don't have a problem with him not signing it, I just wanna make sure we say that, you know, we agree we comply. Larry complies, Mike complies, Greg, 'cause they work for us, we're responsible. And as far as the independent elected officials go, they've all said they agree they comply, except for the prosecutor. And we just put in there that the prosecutor does not assert that he complies. And we can't, I can't tell what's going on up there. They could be doing something that's inappropriate from an accounting perspective, and we would never know. They could have no segregation duties. They could leave cash laying around. We would never know.
You wanna write that out at the bottom, like, before you go to dinner after you?
Yeah, let's type it in, and just circulate, we don't have to vote this, this is just a representation letter. Yeah, after we get. If Estes, if Estes will sign, if you won't, then we'll put prosecutor and assessor, and if you will, then we'll just put prosecutor.
And Marvin signs anyway, so Marvin has not signed again.
All right. Public Ministers F, F, and E.
Okay, well, I put this back on the agenda, 'cause there's been back and forth about the furniture bid. Basically, you should have two things that are, one is the L-shaped desk, the furniture that would be going into her new office. Uh, this is a cooperative purchasing price, so it's basically bid, and it is through, um, SAMCO.
All right.
And that price is one thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-one cents. I just wanna make sure you guys are.
Bargain to me.
Purchasing that.
You okay with it, Marilyn?
Yes. It's what we have.
You okay, Chris?
I'm trying to get to that number.
Hold the bottom.
Okay.
There it is.
I think I scanned them together.
I'm good with it.
So, SAMCO?
Yes.
So, what was all the stuff at the top of that?
I'll do that next.
So, that was a different, something different?
Well, it's, it's about the F, F, and E.
Okay, hang on, hang on, let's deal with one at a time here. So, we're all okay with the cooperative purchase stuff from SAMCO that's seventeen ninety-one sixty-one, right?
What are we meaning by cooperative purchase?
It's on a.
It's a cooperative bid that we can piggyback on it, in the same price.
So, it's on a state contract?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
Good? Jeff?
Then what's the other thing? It doesn't have anything to do with the F, F, and E?
Well.
It does, but.
It's separate. Right?
Yes.
Okay. So, let's get through one, and then we'll go to the other one. All right.
What's our total gonna be that we're spending on the F, F, and E?
Depends what you do with the other one. Got to get to the other one first, it's about $5,000, right around it.
Okay.
And this is all on state contract?
This is what we're talking about first, yes, these two L-shaped desks.
Okay, hang on, 1791 was on state contract, so we're good with it? Good? Okay, let's go to the other one now.
We've got an option here, either or.
Okay.
Top part or the bottom. The top part is. File cabinets, we can either have used file cabinets or new file cabinets.
Hmm, whoops.
Used is $495 for the one versus $734.04 for new. And those panels are used, we don't have an option for any of those, so. And then the metal shelving that she would like to have, that part is not available on that cooperative agreement, that it doesn't really matter because it's $177.
So we have a contract with Samco in excess of $4,500 per 90 days, don't we? So the metal shelving does matter. We will have, we would have to bid it.
Not necessarily, it's still under the amount, we just have to make sure no other departments have purchased anything that wasn't already bid.
Okay. What do you want Marilyn? You've been a good player in this, you've been a good, you've been a good.
You know, the used is fine, I, I don't, I don't, I don't naturally understand what you guys have to do. To me, I was trying to say.
If you're good with used.
Transfer money and get used.
If you're good with used, I'm good with used. You good with used Jeff?
Oh, I think used is the way to go regardless.
So $3,037 for the file cabinets and the shelving stuff.
Yep, I'm good with that.
But then, who's, if somebody comes and buys something from Samco down the road, we may have to bid it even if it's for pins because it may put us over the threshold.
And we may be over the threshold if we're thinking about there at all the used with them.
Because used is not on state contract?
What?
I, I really think you're going to go over the $4,500 for the used.
Yeah, that's kind of what I feel like too.
I really think in this situation, you should bid it.
I mean, if you're buying the 1,700 off state contract, that doesn't count.
Right, that part does not count.
Correct.
So where are we going over $4,500?
We have quite a few offices that buy stuff from.
Other stuff.
Now, now wait a minute, these offices don't buy anything without us signing for it. Is that correct?
Sure, I buy first, but it's already purchased by the time we get it.
Well, then we don't approve it.
Well, that's what we talked about before, was making everybody.
We're still in the middle of our building, they're not seeing that, that's what we're going to be going for, we know that she came up with this. We're, we still, actually, we met last, this week, and we're about ready to come to you guys with a solution going forward. We're not there yet, so, and some of this stuff has a lot of lead time to order these products, so that's why we're here today.
Well, and I think if you are looking back 90 days, you probably with this purchase, you're going to get over the $4,500. So purchases you've already approved.
I.
Marilyn?
I had not purchased any of this.
I know.
All I had.
It's the whole county, it's the whole county.
I know, but I had, I did not, I, there's no way I would go out to Samco and.
No, but other people.
Buy something and then bring it to you.
Other people do. No, no, no.
Even if it's a box of paper, they go.
So, so Marilyn, so Marilyn, let me give you an example, okay? So let's say, this is $3,000 from Samco, okay? If Larry goes out and buys a desk chair from Samco, okay? And Greg goes out and buys a desk chair from Samco, and Marvin goes out and buys a desk chair from Samco, and the total amount of those desk chairs is 500 apiece, so it's $1,500, we're over $4,500. You didn't do it. We agreed that you could do it, they did it without asking us. The county's on the hook. That's the stupid bid law that we're stuck under. It's killing us.
So you have to say for theirs since they didn't run it by you first?
Theoretically, no. But we want to get this thing done. I mean, that's, the goal here is.
It don't matter what they buy it out of the way.
It doesn't matter what they buy.
Because I agree, I think if you go buy it, we can still buy stuff as long as we stay under $4,500. The administrators should be able to buy their $4,500, but they disagree with me, so.
There's a, there's a law that just doesn't give us a lot of flexibility, it's very poorly written. And candidly, it was written when $4,500 bucks was a lot of money.
Is it under 90 days?
Yeah. If it's.
So is the lobbyist working on it?
No, because the.
Change it?
Newspaper kills it. See, the, the bid law has two provisions, one is you have to bid it, two is that when you bid, you have to run newspaper ads. And they don't have to give us a discount on their newspaper ads, they can charge us, they actually charge us a higher rate than they charge. If you want to go run an ad, non-official ad, it's cheaper than if we run a bid ad. Hey, they got to make money somehow.
Why can't, why can't this go through the purchasing agent and have her do it? I mean, she's, we have a purchasing agent, right?
She's, she's one of the guys for us.
Okay, does she get any other prices?
The problem is you can't really bid used.
Okay, under $6,000, right? You think it will stay under 6,000 for 90 days?
I have to look at the vendor, I mean, Samco's a vendor that most departments use, so, I mean, and it's not all chairs, it's a box of paper here.
Because we could, we could do the phone, three phone bids at night under 6,000.
Yeah, if you do a phone bid, if you.
You got?
If you're under the bid.
I mean, lateral file cabinet, five drawer, 42 inches wide, call Shreefer's and, I don't know.
Those are used.
Both. Then we have three bids.
All right, we'll do that, we'll bring that to you, but we'll go ahead and get this.
But let's get the, the part that's on contract ordered and, I mean.
Yeah.
That's the stuff that really takes time, is that modular.
I have no idea when anybody is wanting me to move. I just know that if.
A week.
That is new, the new parts.
Right.
It's going to take five to six weeks to get it. And we've been messing with this now for two months.
I didn't, I didn't know about that, I'm sorry.
I'm not going to be ready to move.
What took so long to get this up here? On the 17, the part that was in government contract, what took so long with that?
Well, we got lots of other things going on.
No, I don't know, I mean, just, you know.
And there was such a debate about it, and so. This email went back and forth for a long time about this.
About the government contract?
No, new, used, if Samco was actually had this stuff on contract and the void on contract.
I missed, missed all those emails about the government contract. Okay.
No, it didn't, not government contracts, it's fine.
What of it is under the government, is that two L-shaped desks and, and that's the stuff that's got to get ordered?
That's the stuff we got to move on.
Is there not lateral file cabinets, five drawer, 42 inch on, on government contract somewhere?
Yeah, there are, they're right there, $734 pop. No, that, oh.
Yeah, we can go right now with those.
They're just more expensive.
It's a $1,000 that you're paying.
But if we want the used ones and save 250 bucks a pop.
I mean, it's a thousand dollars more, but if you had to advertise this, you went out to bid, that all costs money too, so I'm just saying.
These, these used file cabinets are just like new, I don't think they've ever been used. So some big company bought them and decided before they ever installed them, so it's.
But the point is, if we get new, we can get it now.
That's right.
And we can move. If we get them used, we've got to do either phone bids so it gets us at the $6,000 threshold.
But it takes six weeks to get new, and the used are already there.
So. The ones that we're waiting on is the file cabinets, right? Okay, so where do you have stuff filed at now? Or is it all on shelves, on like wall shelves that you can't move or what?
I have file cabinets that I got over on the river when surplus was over on the river, and they're all broken down, my staff is.
So they can't be moved and reused? Can we box them up for a couple of weeks while we get this? If these are used, they don't, they don't have them sitting somewhere and can't ship them to us within.
Now, the, that's not the part that takes the shipping time. The used ones are, we can get those quickly, they are the ones that we have gotten bid. If we get the new ones, my guess is they probably have those immediately available too, it's a pre-standard size.
I thought we could do the phone bid, is what I was talking about.
Phone bid, we got to do it.
So if we do the phone bid, we can get it in the timeframe that she's still needing it?
Yeah, the problem's these, it's, it's the bottom stu, it's the stuff that's on the government contract.
Oh, that part's the stuff that's going to take.
That's the part that's going to take the time. That's the part that we never really needed to have a huge discussion about.
Well, we knew this was coming up for a while.
I know, we dropped the ball.
So, what are we going to do when they're ready to move you in a week?
There's no way, I just.
We got a contractor that needs to get in that other office.
Let's do this. Oh, stop, 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 stop. Stop. Debbie?
Yes?
Get us a report by 1 o'clock this afternoon on when things can be delivered. Expedited, whatever they have to do to get it here. Get us a report by 1 o'clock this afternoon. Once we have that, we all have some actual information to make a decision upon. Otherwise, we're going to all spin around in circles trying to figure out what's going on. If they can get the stuff here in the next week, then we can get you moved in the next week and it won't be a problem because everything will be here, it'll just be Greg and his guys helping box stuff up and carry it down and, and unstacking it for you. It's just moving from one office to another. If it's going to be months or six weeks, then we're going to have to come back and figure out a schedule on it because we got a bid out there and we want to get, get it done and then we'll, that will require more work.
We need to tell Shirk's the same thing because he's got a lot of FF and E that we need to do for his and I want to see what kind of gold they're going to be looking for.
I have Mike to produce a little bit.
Well, if it has to be delayed a little bit Marilyn, that's, that's fine, but I mean, we just, you know, they want to get it done, so.
Well, we'll just have, we've got the contract and if we're the ones holding it up, then that's our own fault.
I mean, you know, I could tell you we're going to move you in a week, you know, we might not have anything down there, it'd be silly to move you in a week.
The only thing I heard was when they started downstairs, it would take them six weeks. And I'm going, okay.
Uh, no, the whole project is six weeks.
And I'm going, that'll take me through my employee that retired yesterday that's coming back.
No, they're supposed to be done downstairs in like 20 days.
Nobody ever told me.
Okay, well, we're sorry, we're sorry for that Marilyn, Marilyn, we're sorry. We're trying to make every, you've been.
I have 240 mentally ill clients that I have to keep taking.
We've got three of them up here, we got to.
You've been, you've been very good, you've been very good to work with and we want to work with you too, okay? We will make this work, you'll, hopefully we can make you happy and.
It's not happy, it's just trying to do it.
We, if I have to come in and help lug boxes to move your files, I will come in and help.
Well, I would take off.
Oh, good job Larry.
I would take off some chairs that somebody bought that didn't.
We're over, we're over 6,000, she just.
I've been trying to do this for two months.
Find out when it's going to come in.
That wasn't on state contract?
If we have to delay the move, we've got to delay the move and we'll.
Your file cabinet?
I don't think it's that big a deal, we're making them out and out of molten.
I thought it was on.
I agree.
I thought it was on some contract.
Hey. We're over to 6,000, we're done with that.
All right.
Okay, if we got to bid it, find out how long it's going to take to get it.
Yep.
Like Mark said, and then let's go from there.
They got to be able to tell us what they got in stock and what they don't.
Marilyn, we didn't, I guess we didn't communicate that very well.
I was never.
We're having our problems with communication, so we.
Nobody's mad about it.
Marilyn?
I'm upset.
I, Marilyn's? I apologize, I apologize.
We're working with you on it though, we're going to be fine.
I have to keep going and I just have to. You were talking about, about signing that letter that we're following all the laws and rules so the county doesn't get in trouble, that's what I have.
What do you need?
That's my office.
That's what we got to do with these bids too.
And, and I'm trying to understand Marilyn, and, and we want, you've been very good to work with throughout this. In all the years I've been up here, you've been great to work with and I've enjoyed every minute of it. What is it you need? I guess I don't understand if we move all your stuff and basically set it up so that over a weekend we move all your files and Monday morning, the only difference between Friday afternoon and Monday morning is your office is on a different floor. What else do you need?
We just have lots of stuff to pack up.
Okay, what else do you need? Is that it? Is it just the packing up? We can arrange for that. If we have to hire somebody to pack your stuff up, we'll do it. We can arrange to get everything moved from four to the new office. I don't want you to be in a position where you can't do your job.
Well, Dale's also got to buy a switch to, to a different port switch, not a ports down there, so. She's in the process of doing that to make sure the computers can hook up, so there's all kinds of things that.
Lot of moving parts.
We, yesterday, Monday, we started e-filing with the court, with ProBay.
Which will make it hopefully easier for you.
And so, you know, yeah.
Hopefully.
But, you know, we just have to have all of that operating and working. It'll work.
We'll get it done.
Thanks Marilyn.
Thanks Marilyn.
Are all the items that she wants to buy on the contract, but the new ones are on the contract?
Everything.
Everything's on there, but they'd have to be new.
So here's the deal, to save $1,000.
But I think in, in all reality, you can go with Samco because they have the state contract. They can offer you a used item and replacement for it at a lower cost. They're still providing you with the same item that is on the state contract.
You put that on a piece of paper and you got a deal.
You're out here.
Da-da-da-da, you put that on a piece of paper, you got a deal, I, I am happy as, see, that's, that's what we need. We need that kind of, I mean, I don't mean in bed sense, we need that thinking.
Going to, you know, a gasoline places, they bid this price, but they're going to give it to us cheaper, we're not going to say, well, hey, we're going to pay the higher price.
It's a different product though. I mean, you're, you're, you go to a tire shop and, hey, I got a new tire for 800 bucks, or I got this tire that's partially used and it's only 600 bucks.
No, because you're not going to have any.
It looks like the same, it's the same brand of file cabinet, same size, it's just ones that are used from the first to the new.
Yeah, it's not like tires that's going to have diminished use.
If you guys agree with that, I, honest God, if you agree with that, I think that is a awesome solution.
I think it makes perfect sense.
I love it.
You're getting the same product, it's not more than.
Okay, I don't agree it's the same product, but, I mean, it's similar.
It, it would be, it would be as if.
It's a 42-inch file, as a file is a file is a file.
I need a 50-pound bag of grass seed from you and that costs 100 bucks. But you come to me and say, okay, I got.
I've got this busted bag.
I got two, I got two bags that were 100 pounds and I've used 50 pounds out of each. And I really can't do anything with the two 50-pound bags, so instead of charging 100 bucks for a 100-pound bag of grass seed, I'll charge you 50 bucks for 100 pounds, but it's in two bags of grass seed.
But the thing you don't know is that seat, is that seat any good or has it been sitting in my shed for two years?
But I'm getting the same grass seed.
Yeah, but it may not grow. It may not be live seed.
Are the file cabinets going to work? I mean, are the drawers going to work? You're, you're taking that liability.
That is the risk you're taking. No, if it comes in and don't work, you send it back because they're still going to say that it worked just fine.
But then you're, then you're, then you're just spinning your wheels again, now you're back to.
Okay, if it works for Kristen and the auditors, I'm okay with a used product too, so, anyway.
I mean, on that, that one item is what's going to.
That's it, yeah, the other things.
The other two items are not.
Well, but the other thing is, is getting it here, I mean, we really need the stuff in a week or two weeks.
And I'm just going to put the plug in now for that because.
She's not going to be able to move.
If the stuff's here, she'll be able to move.
Lots of different directions, lots of overwhelming stuff going on, and now we're talking about new purchasing policies, which the purchasing policy is going to put not even more, double the responsibility.
Well, worry about that when you bring that up here. I didn't, because I didn't like the idea to start with. But Marilyn was, is not going to be able to move, she basically said that, she ain't going to be able to move in a week and a half. Then you hear the same thing, she's about ready to cry because she's, she don't, don't know she's going to be able to do it.
All right, we have it.
I'm about to do some silent prayer.
I need some silent prayer, please give me some strength. All right, I think that's a great way of solving it and if the file ca, you know, maybe what we do. Go out and look at the file cabinets. If they're falling apart, we buy the new ones.
No, she said, she's.
Oh, she has, okay, then I think that's a great solution.
They've never been installed.
So they're effectively new. Let's do it. Save the taxpayers money.
All right, I'll give you a time frame.
Thank you. Anything else? Have we pounded sand long enough yet?
Clerk's office asked about painting some walls up, have you talked to them? And I don't, you know, I don't necessarily say it has to be this year, you can put it on some kind of plan for even next year to put in a budget for next year. They just brought it up, I wanted to bring it to you.
Can I be added to that list next year?
You know, I think there's some merit maybe looking at painting a lot of the stuff in the, this annex, I'm not sure some of it's been painted. I know it hasn't been painted, so I've been here, I can't tell you when it was painted.
And then.
Will you use some of that recycled paint from a solid waste district?
I don't know if we have any of that left. No, it's, that's a great idea, it's, but just get, find out who needs it worse and address them as we go. If we need to get some of the help from over there at the courts, the, like we did before. So we're not, you know, tying up your guys, especially during summer when you all cut grass everywhere. And then number two is the, the windows, I guess 10 years or so. Whenever they did all the.
I remember that, they washed every window in the building.
If you look at those on that side of the building, they.
A lot of them are stained.
Is that what it is? Okay. Just go over there and look at it and tell them that it's, the windows are stained, it's the, in between the panes or whatever. Okay, tell them again. They asked about it, it's simple, is that if you don't, if you just sweep it under the rug, they're not going to appreciate it. If you at least go talk to them about it, they'll be fine with it. They still may not be happy, but that happens.
Those windows open up?
Some do, some don't.
They just want them cleaned so they can wash the bakery until we're there during the day, I mean, it's pretty entertaining.[1683.62] Give them some water. Oh, no, they gotta work, it's just.
Do you have anything else Debbie? Kristen? Greg?
Give you an update on where we're at with Marilyn's job. Probably a week and a half downstairs will be done and we'll be ready for upstairs.
Perfect.
So.
There's our timeframe.
Talk to her and find out if she is gonna in fact be ready to move. Because I was taking it as she's saying she's not ready to move.
I was taking it as she's never gonna be ready to move.
She doesn't want to move.
But.
She does not want to move. Play that perfectly clear. She doesn't want to move.
She never said that to either, any of us. She's been good along the whole time. I think it's, I think what she doesn't want to do is move. It's not that she doesn't want to be in the basement with the new offices. It's not that she wants to stay in the fourth floor. It's that she doesn't want to move. It's the physical move is what she doesn't want to do.
Very overwhelmed because she's lost two of her longtime employees and she's having to return and start over.
Yeah.
In the middle of all of that.
But they'll be happier because they'll have nice new offices.
And it does look good so far.
Yeah.
I haven't got it overlooked, I'm gonna do that. All right, Larry?
Just a quick update. We had a first meeting the other night.
St. Martin's?
St. Martin's. It went well.
Nice article in the paper by the way, Jeff. Thank you.
We had a few farmers that had some concerns. We addressed it as well as we could. I think we have probably eighteen people there, which is more than I expected, so.
Great. We've been trying to talk about it everywhere I go, try to talk them about it.
We got another meeting scheduled.
Tonight?
Russell. The way I'm handling it, unless y'all tell me, if someone gets it, we're telling them we want their pros or cons.